How is everyone? So, we're having some technical difficulties today in that our livestream is not working and our recording is not working, so we get two microphones for the price of one. Jeannie, you want to come up and give us our first community life update? And I think Seth is coming too. Seth is going to magically appear somewhere. Oh, you're gonna have to start by yourself.
Oh, boy, okay, great. All right, is our... I need our little... Thank you. Okay, so I need to pinch this on. Hi. How's everyone today? Good? All right. Gonna talk a little bit about Touch Town today. Actually Seth was gonna kick us off, but I think he got stuck on a call. So, we are gonna be having a follow-up Q and A for Touch Town Friday, August 20th. So if you have any questions, you haven't had an opportunity to log in, don't know what you're doing, please come and we're happy to help you. I was very pleased at our breakout sessions a couple of weeks ago. Seventy-five percent of our IL residents came to the breakout sessions, got logged in. That was phenomenal. And as I mentioned this morning, I think the highlight for me that week was actually those residents that were a little nervous, not tech savvy, were unsure of themselves. We got them logged in and they were so excited and happy and feeling confident about navigating through the app. So that was super exciting for me to just watch. Since that time, we've got probably up to eighty percent of our IL residents using Touch Town and comfortable with it. And then we're continuing to meet with other residents who need to get set up. So, I want to again, for the numerous time, thank our ambassadors for all the help and feedback they have given us. They have been just a tremendous support for us and for all of you. They will continue to be around and help volunteer when we get our kiosk up and running, and I'll let Seth talk a little more about that.
Good afternoon. Got the thumbs up from Cory, so they can hear me on the TV. Yes, so I am gonna give a quick update about our kiosk. So, we launched, we had a rollout week, we set out our kiosk on a Friday. I come back in on a Monday and it's all locked up. And we tried every which way to get it unlocked. Don't know what happened, but it was locked. And Tom and I have been, what? Between the... We've been talking to Touch Town quite frequently, right? To try to get them to help unlock the kiosk. So I think Tom touched base with them here a bit ago, so we're working on every angle to get that back out in its rightful place so you guys can start utilizing it. So hang in there with us on that. As far as what's next for Touch Town, so along with not only the resident view that we have purchased as an organization, we also purchased the family view. So what that means is any of our family and friends will be able to download the Touch Town app like you guys did and go in and see what's happening here at FVD. They won't have the full view that you guys have, they won't have all the different icons, they won't have the interactive icons for scheduling activities, but they will be able to go in and see, you know, our menus, see what's happening as far as our programs and activities. So we're gonna hopefully roll that out in the next couple of weeks. So we plan on that going out through one of our community updates, and then certainly we'll be here to assist if anybody needs help with their families getting logged in. So keep an eye out for that. We also talked about in our breakout session, having some additional interactive abilities with our culinary service. So we will be working with Matt as he gets settled in, and hopefully over the next four to six weeks, build out a nice culinary services icon that you'll be able to make reservations, order food online, check your resident account balance. So we've been working with both FullCount, who does all of our culinary service tracking and trending, and with Touch Town to make that happen. So I envision when we have that fully up and running, we'll do some larger sessions like we did a couple of weeks ago, and then have some opportunities for more of a one-on-one breakdown as well to show you guys how that will work. I'm gonna pass it over back to Jeannie, and she's gonna talk about nutrition.
So we are winding up our physical dimension of wellness that we've been focusing on the last six weeks. So I heard the wiffle ball game on Friday was a huge hit, so thank you for those that either were spectators or actually played. Sounds like a lot of fun. So the last Wellness and Community Life, Physical Dimension of Wellness event that we'll be sponsoring is tomorrow morning at 7:30 for a fitness class. Jo and I will be leading that. It'll actually be seated with an optional stand. So if you're up in Adam tomorrow morning, we'd love to have you join us. Starting next Monday, we will go to the nutritional dimension of wellness. It will go through September 24th. And so just some little highlights here, I know JC has an apple picking planned during this time period. And also, we had, we are reaching out to associates and you as well. We would like to put together a resident COOP. So we are asking for recipes from you as well as the associates. We'd like it to be slightly healthy. I told them this morning, it can have butter in it, but maybe some blueberries or something like that. So doesn't have to be a hundred percent, you know, fat-free or whatever, just nutritious maybe, but we'd love for you to share a recipe for us. Also Wellness will be putting out some healthy tips. Eat this, maybe not that, just some alternatives. So there'll be much more communication around the nutritional dimension of wellness. So thanks for your time today.
Thank you. I have submitted my smoothie recipe, so...
You have, yes.
I'm anxiously waiting to see if it makes the cut, so... All right. Jessica is out, our administrator is out of the community, so I am pinch hitting for her today. Give me one second here. All right, how's that? Thumbs up? All right. But we just, we had some feedback and we wanted to present a little high-level information about our new health center. So what we did, we've kind of got a comparison of our current health center and Alderwood. So we're gonna still have fifty beds, so we are licensed for fifty skilled nursing beds. Our current breakdown is twenty-two private suites and fourteen semi-private suites. When we move into our new Alderwood Health and Rehab Center, we will move that to thirty-six private suites and seven shared private suites, semi-private suites. Kind of looking at our ancillary service breakdown, so in our current health center, we have one dining room. And when we move to Alderwood, we will have two dining rooms. There'll be a dining room on each floor, so one dining room on the second floor, one dining room on the third floor. For therapy, we currently have one therapy room delivering all three disciplines. When we move into Alderwood, we will have three dedicated therapy spaces. So our PT rehab gym, our OT simulation center, and then our speech assessment center. For resident rooms, our average square feet currently is a hundred and eighty square feet. So we, when we move to Alderwood, will average three hundred and eighty square feet, so much more spacious, which will be great for our residents. Our resident care program, so currently in our existing structure, we kind of have a mixed bag, so to speak, of serving our long-term care residents and our short-stay residents. When we move to Alderwood, they really allow us an opportunity to delineate service delivery lines. So our second floor, we're really gonna have a focus on short-stay rehab stays, and then our third floor will be our long-term care floor. And then life enrichment, our current operation has one central activity room. Our new Alderwood will have a life enrichment community room, and then we'll also have a reservable private dining room. So where we're at as far as a survey perspective to getting the green light to move into our new health center, so on 7/21, we did have ODH, our health surveyor, come in. So the health surveyor is looking at our nursing policies and procedures, a lot of operational stuff day-to-day, and she did give us the approval for recommendation for moving our beds over. We are still waiting for our life safety code survey. So that's really more of the physical plan survey, looking at our fire systems, our ERP, our drills. So we are, hopefully they will be here this week. We were hoping last week they would join us, but as soon as they come and survey us, hopefully we pass, and then we will be moving quickly into our transition plan, communicating that with our residents and our families, and moving our residents from our current health center into their new home of Alderwood. And then that current health center will shortly thereafter start the renovation into the Rowan House, which will be licensed assisted living with a focus on memory care. And that is our health center update.
Thank you. Angela is gonna come in and give us a little update on HR. Thanks Seth.
Hi, how's everybody doing? Come on up here Ruth. So I'm just gonna tell you a couple of things about what we've done this month, and then I'm gonna introduce our wonderful Associate of the Month for August. So a couple of the fun things that we've done, I have to look, you know, we're partnering on the dimensions of wellness, so you all saw all the tallies and stuff in the stairwells. So we've been trying to get people to encourage people to take the stairs instead of the elevator. That's very exciting. We've done a great job, residents and associates. And then we've done the Buddy Up walks with our residents, so I'd say maybe twelve of us have now had a consistent walking schedule, which is also really fun. And then of course, why not celebrate Chocolate Day while you're also working out? So we gave out some milk chocolates, but people sure do enjoy them in the afternoon. So that's very exciting. But the most exciting part about today is to introduce to you our August Associate of the Month. This is Ruth on body. She's one of the SKNAs in the health center. We, it's such a privilege to introduce Ruth for so many reasons. She is such a key member to the health center. She not only supports and trains all new associates, but she is so supportive to those that she's worked alongside with for years. And on top of that, she still finds time to support some of our residents in independent living through home care services, so she's truly phenomenal. I'm gonna let her say a few words.
Hi, everybody. I thank God for this opportunity I just got for this month, and I thank you, everybody who just gave me the honor of this month. And as I say in the morning, I'm not the best, and I'm not the, I'm not than anybody else. I'm just like a microwalker, but because of the honoring you honor me, I just take it, and I thank you everybody to honor me for this month. Thank you.
We just, we just cannot tell you enough about Ruth, so I'm gonna tell her a quick story. So Rita, of course, spent some time supporting the health center during our very dark month of December last year. So Ruth actually was one that had come back, and she was out for a little bit of time. And, you know, we were working with a lot of our younger staff, sometimes we were working with agency staff, and when you just, there's a difference between that and your tenured staff, right? And so her first day back, Rita was like, you know, going through the process of what it was like to move someone out of isolation into something else, and she had been working with some of these younger or temporary staff to let them know, and she had the list of things to do, and she walked into the room to give her the rundown, and Ruth just looked at her and said, "It's done, we did." And she was like, "Think on their back." I'm like, "Yes, we understand." So I just thought that was fun to share.
Ruth is great. She's an awesome leader. So happy to see that we were able to recognize a health center employee too, because I think so many times we don't get the luxury of seeing our health center associates, and so it's great, and Ruth is very, very deserving of all of that. So, all right, so Betsy was going to take a vacation, I don't know, maybe in March or April, and her kiddos got COVID, so she couldn't go. So she is taking a COVID-free vacation this week, but she also wanted to give you a charitable giving update, so we're gonna use some technology. And I'm gonna ask Tom if he can monitor the sound for us, and let's hope I can get it to work. Well, that's not all that encouraging. She's sitting very still. She's very well behaved.
Hi, everyone. I'm Betsy Gillespie, Charitable Giving Director here at Friendship Village of Dublin, and I'm excited to share this charitable giving update with you today. In my update today, I'll review our achievements from the last fiscal year, which ended on June 30th, and then look ahead at some of the exciting things that are coming this fiscal year, which started on July 1st and runs through next year. Thank you to each of the 229 donors who made a contribution to Friendship Village of Dublin last year. We raised over $250,000, a seventy-two percent increase from the previous year. Distributions are what we give from the funds that were raised here at Friendship Village of Dublin to support a program, a project, a piece of equipment, or part of our facility. Last year, these distributions or gifts from our funds back into the community totaled over $200,000, a thirty percent increase from the year before. In addition to supporting our resident benevolence program, we also distributed funds for our Friendship Village of Dublin scholarship program, as well as for the new program, Friendship in Bloom. Launching Friendship in Bloom was a major highlight of last year. We were fortunate to have lots to celebrate last year despite the pandemic, and look forward to an even rarer year ahead. I am pleased to share that our charitable fund balances recovered quite a bit last year, thanks to very generous giving and strong investment performance. We definitely hope that this trend continues so that we have more funds on hand to support Friendship Village of Dublin. Looking ahead to next year, I'm excited to work with our wonderful charitable giving committee to continue to increase support for the resident's benevolence fund, the Friendship Village of Dublin Fellowship Fund, and to continue to encourage support of all of our Friendship Village of Dublin funds to allow growth in special programs and enhance the quality of life for our residents. I hope you have our Life Away Garden Tour on your calendar on September 14th from 11 to 2:00. It will be a wonderful opportunity to show off our community. I also want to draw your attention to Amazon Smile and Provo Community Rewards. I'll be sending out more information about this program too. If you aren't already supporting Friendship Village of Dublin through Amazon Smile or Provo Community Rewards, consider joining us. I am so lucky to get to work with a very committed group of residents on the resident charitable giving committee. We meet quarterly, go over new ideas, and develop strategies to continue to grow this program here at Friendship Village of Dublin. Thank you so much to this generous group chaired by Ned Dewire for sharing your time and expertise. Finally, I hope you'll mark your calendar and join us next month on September 27th for a fun charitable giving presentation featuring a panel of experts, our residents. While I would have preferred to be in person with you today, I'm grateful for technology and the ability to share this update. As always, feel free to stop by, give a call, or share an email. My office is right across from the salon and right next door to the Mirfield Room, and I love visitors, so come by and say hello. I'll see you soon. Bye-bye.
That was pretty fun, huh? A little interactive technology there? So I said to the earlier group, "I think Betsy's on vacation." I think she may have lied to us and said that she'd rather be here with all of you, but we'll see, we'll see. I'm gonna send you some marketing update.
Good afternoon, everyone. Just wanted to update you on sales and marketing. Probably a lot of you have seen us in the hallways, we've been very, very busy, having appointments and tours, and we've put a lot of interest in the community lately, which is great. And I know you've seen the notices about new residents moving in, so we had a very busy July, so as you can see behind me, the list of all of the people who have moved in, so hopefully you've received notices about these movements, but also that you've been able to see these people and introduce yourselves and welcome to them to the community. We do have another couple moving in in August. John and Nancy Coos are coming in, sorry, maybe trying to see that. They're moving into A366. We do have a couple of other slated movements, I just don't have the dates for them yet. Those will be the Engleys and the Kings who are moving into A367 and A466 respectively. And we have another couple of people who are working through the paperwork too, as well. So again, very, very busy in our offices, our team is doing a great job. In addition... We are hoping to start a new referral luncheon. It's called Be a Friend, Bring a Friend. We anticipated starting early September, so if all goes well, we can have guests in the dining room. This is something we're slated doing, and we will keep you updated, of course, and the information on this will be on Touch Town in your newsletter, but just to get on your calendars, starting September 2nd, and it will be the first Thursday of the month, every other month, we are inviting you to bring a guest to lunch, somebody who does live with the community that you think might be interested in moving to the community. Whether they're a month out, a year out, or five years out, please encourage them to come learn more about the community, because those are the types of people who want to learn more and you'd like to start talking to them, you know, even though it might be some time out. So as you remember, it took some time to make a decision and make a move, and we understand that. So that will be an opportunity to have lunch with me, to learn more about the community. You all as residents can express what it's like to live here from a lived-to-styled perspective and your experiences, but then I can also answer general questions, and hopefully set a time for those people to come back and learn more for their specific situation and their timeframe. So again, if we can do guests for lunch, we'll probably limit it to ten guests, that would be inclusive of the residents and their guests. So if one person brings one guest or a couple, we include that in the amount of people we have. And then as always, just as a reminder, our current referral incentive is that if you refer someone who ends up moving in, we're giving away one three-month rent. So it's a great, great incentive, and we've had several residents who've been able to benefit from that, yes.
I thought we are not allowed to bring guests.
We're not right now, so we're hoping that by then we can, but if we cannot, you know, we'll keep you updated, that this is what we're shooting for, and if we have to move it back, we will, but I just wanted to get it on your radar. And if you have friends who are interested and these dates don't work for you, or if we're not able to have people in the dining room, feel free to give us a call, we can certainly work out a one-on-one presentation, whether we go to their home, we meet them off-campus, or we come here within a more private setting. Okay? Thank you.
Cory, are we working here? Are we working here? It's a lot of work with two microphones. All right. All right, so we're gonna talk a little bit about some fun things today, but how many of you utilize COPC here at Friendship Village? How many of you enjoy utilizing COPC here at Friendship Village? How many of you sometimes have a hard time getting in to see a physician? Well, I like to see that. Earlier, there were a couple of people who had indicated they have a little bit of a hard time making appointments. So we, because of the utilization of the COPC team, the decision has been made to really buy COPC to bring in two nursing practitioners to support simply, or just in the health center. So one of the things about the health center is that we are so fortunate to have COPC, and there are some days or some patients or residents in the health center that see a physician every day, depending on their situation, depending on where they are in their recovery, depending on if they just move in or they're just moving out. So there's a very high amount of utilization in the health center. And to accommodate that, and to make sure that the clinic is available for lots of people, we are going to be bringing in a nurse practitioner to work really just in the health centers, starting on Mondays and Fridays. Mondays tend to be a discharge day for the health center, Fridays tend to be an admission day, people coming out of the hospital. So starting this week, Kristen Stoffer has been here, she's shadowing Dr. Rush this week, and then Jamie Minor will also be here. These are the two nurse practitioners. For consistency purposes, they'll be the same people, the same two. Kristen's been a nurse practitioner for twenty years, and again, these two were hand-selected by COPC to come work here at Friendship Village. So I think it'll just be another layer of support that COPC will provide for us, so just wanted everyone to be aware of that. The second thing is that how many of you knew that there was a med school here in Dublin? Yeah. So Ohio University has a DO program right over in Dublin by the Costco. Anybody near the Costco? If not, Craig will take you, because he loves it. He goes for a hot dog and ice cream. Don't tell him that I taught you that. All right, so starting this September, we're gonna have a rotation of about four med students to be working with our physicians, doing some elder care, some geriatric care. They'll be here typically on Friday mornings, and I just wanted you to all be aware, because they, if you have an appointment on Friday, they may ask to participate in your appointment. You can say "great," you can also say "no." So no one's feelings are going to be hurt if you say, "I don't want you in at my appointment." But we wanted you to be aware that they will be here rotating for a little bit. I really enjoyed this, I think it's a really nice interaction between the Ohio University campus here in Dublin that has physical therapy, occupational therapy, speech therapy, a med student, or excuse me, a med school, a PA program, and maybe in the near future, a nursing program. So I think if we can work on the relationship, it could be a good thing for all of us, so... All right. How many of you read some information in the newspaper about the Bailey? How many of you are like, "Rita, did you just lie to us?" So we have, I wanted to start by saying that I read every single comment card that comes through, and currently Larry Kennedy puts together a summary for us, for me, to talk about kind of the trends of what the comment cards are, in many cases, and there we go. This particular week, the week of July 18th through July 25th, there were ten general negative comments. Guess what they were all about? The Bailey. So I want to talk a little bit about kind of how the evolution of all of this started. So you all got a letter about a month ago in the evening, and/or a mail chimp on Monday afternoon, and it had some facts about the Bailey. We then had our town hall on Tuesday where we talked about the Bailey, maybe one of the harder meetings I've had since I've been at Friendship Village, but... And then later in the day, the next day, the following day, you were reading articles at The Dispatch, and maybe online, in Columbus Monthly, that didn't represent what you heard from me on Tuesday and/or what was in the letter. So the way this works is that a press release was established or developed, and it had the basics. It had, the Bailey will have eighty, mid-eighty units, it's a collaboration between Crawford Hoying and Friendship Village of Dublin. It said the project was forty million, I told you it was forty-two. It said that many of the Bailey residents will have full access to Friendship Village. Obviously, none of those things are completely the truth. What happens is the press release is made, it's then distributed to all of the media outlets here in Columbus, and I think there was also some national ones, specifically in some trade magazines. And then each of those writers or reporters... And then each of those writers or reporters takes the information from the press release and communicates it in their own format in the press release. So the way that this was communicated was that the Friendship Village was going to give $40 million to the Bailey. That's obviously not the case, $1 million. That the Bailey residents will have full access to life care here at Friendship Village. Obviously, not the case. And some other fun things. So we are going to redistribute the original letter that you all got so that you have the facts, because those are the facts. We don't know yet where and how things are going to shake out related to coming into the building. I do know that every single person that will move into Bailey will get a membership to Mesh Fitness, which is in the Bridge Park neighborhood. So we don't expect to have them utilize the gym and the fitness center and/or our activities. So I just wanted to clear the air because I want to make sure that you're very understanding that what we are telling you is the truth. And if you have questions, we will certainly answer them. Does anyone have any questions on the Bailey issues or topic before we move on? Yes, Renee?
So will the information that was incorrect in these press releases be corrected so that people considering moving into the Bailey will not have misconceptions?
That's a great comment. The comment is that will the misinformation that was provided be corrected? And over time, it will. I mean, this was just the initial press release. Anyone moving into the Bailey will have a very clear understanding of what's happening. And I think we need to really establish what those parameters are. So I said earlier that the Bailey project's construction will start in probably March of next year, and it will be completed in 2023. So we have a little time to figure it all out. Any other questions or comments? Okay. How many of you live on Ashrun 5? No one is. All right, well, sorry, how about Ashrun 4? Yeah, do you have ceilings anymore? No. Are you excited that you don't have ceilings? I hope so, that you're excited. So our corridor project has started. It started yesterday. The ceiling tiles and wallpaper have been removed. I know on 5, I think on 4 today, they were working on pulling the wallpaper and the ceiling tiles down. They will then go to 3, and then to 2, and then the fifth floor. They'll be in skim coating the walls next week. And then the fund will continue until December. So it will not be a constant thing like it was kind of, or maybe as disruptive. It's still going to be disruptive, but that project has started. Steve is working with JMM Philly. And I told the group earlier that I'm going, we are going to manage this project so closely that they may not like us at the end, but that's okay. We're going to try and get it done before July, excuse me, December for you and make it as painless as possible. You know, with COVID, we may have to stop it. I don't know what really that's going to, how that's all going to shake out, but we're working on a plan. We also will be bringing in HEPA filters and then for the individual corridors. But the filters have been changed in the larger, or HVAC unit to help with the debris and the dust. But it's going to be exciting, right? People tell me that they can't wait to have it done. I said, "Okay, I'm going to remind you of that in September." All right, so I'm going to have Matt come up at the end. But in the short term, we're going to talk about a couple of the things from an operations perspective that we're working on that are not all that exciting to all of you, but are critical for our operations. So if you remember, in December, we talked about the transition away from LCS into a self-management role. The ending on that is January 31st, 2022. There's several things that need to be done before that date. These are the important, big ones that we're starting. So our sales team, Emily and Lee, are working on our Salesforce conversion. So right now, I'm just going to use random numbers. We pay $5,000 to utilize Salesforce. And we get probably 20% of the capabilities that Salesforce can provide. We've been working on this transition, I think, for four or five months. And we are 98% done with this. So we should be going live, yep, in August. We're very excited. Lee and Emily have done an incredible job on this. When we fully convert, we will spend about $5,000 and have about 90% of the capabilities of Salesforce. So when we talk about the benefits of kind of stepping away and figuring out what the right thing is for Friendship Village, this Salesforce is the perfect example of that. The next thing is Craig's going to be working on converting all of our systems, our financial systems, our profit and loss system, our financials, our balance sheet, our operating statements, all of those into, away from Oracle, into PCC or Point Click Care. How many of you have heard the word PCC before? Right, so it's our medical, our electronic medical record that we're collaborating and pulling everything together. They also have a financial system that we'll be pulling through. They go live on this in October. Realistically, we're thinking that it'll be fully converted in October, excuse me, October or November. So there's a ton of work. The general ledger needs to be pulled through, pulling all the numbers and historical data, all of that so we can continue to benchmark from a financial standpoint where we are. And then probably the biggest transition that we'll have is the payroll system. So currently, we use a company called Oracle HDM. And we are going to be utilizing UKG, which is the ultimate criminous group? Thanks. So UKG is the platform that we will be using. Angela's going to be the carrier of this. She's going to be the champion of that. She will start in September to get all the historical data in. This payroll system is absolutely critical. We have to make sure we pay our associates and we pay them on time and we pay them the accurate amount of money and also make sure the taxes and their 403B and all of those things are correct. This is a critical component. We'll start it in September and we'll go live in January. It takes that long to make sure that the systems are talking to each other and the data that's in there goes back and forth. So these are three huge components that we are working on behind the scenes. And from an operations perspective, we're going to introduce Matt. We understand that there's some heavy lifting that we need to do in the culinary department. It's not going to happen overnight. We understand that Bistro needs to be reopened, the Riverside Cafe. We'd like to start sitting in that, we serve. We'd like the steam table to be corrected and the induction to be removed so that the steam table's kind of in the area of the legacy. We'd like to see some different menus, some gluten-free, some vegetarian, some heart-healthy. So we'll be working on all of that together. The other thing is that here in Emily's day, we have about 27 open apartments. There's lots of reasons for that, but we're done with excuses. We're just going to work real hard on trying to find some great new residents to live here at Friendship Village and for us to be able to serve. And then last but not least, Angela, again, there's 22 open positions. Has anyone read an article recently about the labor market? It's real. So we have 22 open positions, 12 of which are in our STNA position in the health center, five of which are in our environmental services or housekeeping department. How many people do you think are in the overall in the housekeeping department? Somebody guess. Eight, higher? 12, one higher? 13, right there? Yeah, 13. So five of the 13 are missing. Can you imagine being a housekeeper, coming to work, and trying to do what you need to do without half of your team? So when your housekeeper comes in, give them an extra big high five. Be very appreciative of them. They're working very, very hard. And I know we're working very hard to try and find some workers. The wages are where they need to be. We just looked at all of that. It's really just a component of getting people through the door. So that's going to be a big struggle and it's not going to go away. We've got to find a way to make sure that we have the bodies to do the work that needs to be done. From a construction standpoint, we got to get all the wood moved up and moved in. We talked about the corridors. And then the thing that really needs to be done is we have to get, for our memory care project, which we now will refer to as 2.3 or the Rowan House, we have to get our guaranteed maximum price set. So what does that mean? It means that before we start construction, we'll sign a contract with Frisili and JMM, and it'll say that it's going to cost $6 million to build this 2.3 project. And that's what it's going to cost. So if the lumber goes up again 400%, that's not, that is, we have agreed to pay $6 million for this project. So we are finding that the costs are probably about 30% higher than they were a year ago. So that's going to be a huge impact for us to make sure that we can financially afford it and also do what we need to do. So there's some work to be done on all of that. Any questions on any of these very exciting things? Yes, Jim?
I don't know what an infection control system in culinary...
Yep, so the infection control system. So you can't see this, but when you go into the kitchen, we want to make sure that the floors are clean, your walk-in freezers are clean. We've got the proper labeling system for food to make sure that it's not being used multiple days. Like, it is a very robust system. And because the kitchen is inspected by the Ohio Department of Health, we have even more regulations on that. And we've had a couple of deficiencies in the last couple of years, but under Matt's leadership, we're going to work hard on straightening that up and getting it organized. Good question. Okay, let's introduce, have Matt come up, and then we'll take any questions. So Matt, I know many of you have met him. He's at, this is day number two. He came back, and he's going to come back for day number three. And we'll give him some introductions.
She said "sway." Hi, everybody. Good afternoon. How's everybody doing today? So we have the infection control program. That would be... I'll just explain that real quick from my point of view. So everybody in this room who owes part is what we call a highly susceptible population. Means you're susceptible to getting sick. The really important part, one of the things I find really important, that we're taking care of the food the right way to keep you healthy. Fortunately, we're in a position where I don't have, I was in hospitals for 10 years, and we had to put everything well down because we had to make sure that your food was safe for you to eat. That's really what the important part is to make. You know, to give you the food, give you good food and make it safe. And there's a lot of things that we're going to try to work on. So real quick, I just wanted to answer that question. I'll stop in my head. So again, my name is Matt Schick. I'm the director of food and beverage. Everybody, I think, saw the memo that Rita sent out last week. It was very flattering, very embarrassing to agree at the same time. Because I've done a lot of different things over the years. Real quick, the last 20 years, I've been in Columbus for 20 years now. I started out at Lydys in German Village, Lydys American Bistro. Anyone knows Sue Duvie? Or knew Sue Duvie? I know she passed a few years ago. Wonderful lady. I've worked at Children's Hospital here in Columbus as executive chef. I ran culinary school for seven years. And the last four years I worked for a company called Morrison Healthcare. The last year and a half, I've been working as executive chef at Riverside Methodist Hospital. So I've come here, and the reason I came here, and I know the question that was brought up in the panel interview is why do I want to come here after everything I've done? And it's for all of you and the family that you have here. It's a great family orientation, a great family-oriented environment. And I'll slow down, I forgot, Pat reminded me earlier. It's being part of the family that is here. And being able to take care of all you and give you a great experience, great food. And we have pretty good food. We have some great stuff going on. We're just going to make it better. You know, and it's, there's a lot of things we're going to do. And Rita doesn't have her list that she had earlier today and she gave to me at 11 o'clock, the two pages of things I need to work on. So that's not mentioning the five pages of notes I took before I even stepped in this room yesterday. So I look forward to serving all of you. You'll see me out quite often. I don't believe, I don't like being in my office unless I have to. You'll see me at lunch for sure. I'm going to probably try to stick around for dinner most nights, too. And I look forward to talking to you and meeting all of you. So thank you for your time, and I hope you have a wonderful evening. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Matt. He wasn't exaggerating. It was a very long list. We'll get there. Slow and steady wins the race, right? Okay, let's take some questions. Who's got the first one? Oh, come on. You've got to make me work for a little bit. Matt, thank you, Lois. I'll pay you later.
Matt's question is, will you remind everybody, please, where their alarm went?
Oh, great, thank you. That is excellent. We talked about this at the resident council meeting. In the last two months, or the last month, we've had two residents who have had medical emergencies, who were not wearing their pendants, who were found on the floor the next day during your safety check. So please, 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 wear your pendant. We very much recommend that you wear your pendant 24 hours a day, all the time. But there were two instances in the last really month that that would have been critical and really helped make sure we could get medical attention to those people sooner. So please, wear your pendants. Thank you, Lois, for the reminder. I appreciate that. But if you don't have a pendant, let us know. We can get you another one. There will be a charge for them, but it's important. Yes, it's important, right, Ruth? Yes. Okay, anybody else have a question or comment? Yes?
Do we have to recharge them at any time after some year?
Great. The question is, you have to recharge them after any given time. Those pendants are smarter than you and I together. So they have a battery. Every day when the security pops up, the security report is the word I was looking for, pops up, it says so-and-so didn't check in. It also says that so-and-so's battery is 50% or 25% or out of the building. It also tells us when it's out of range. So we will come to you and replace them. I think they're five to seven years, the life of the pendants, but it will tell us in the report where it is at that time. Yes?
Would you mind just doing a quick review of the emergency response if someone does...
Yes, so the emergency response. So if you were to push your call pendant, security will be the first person to respond to you. Depending on where they are on the campus, it is a priority. They're not, they're coming directly to you, but it will take a little bit of time for them to get to you. If you know that you're having a stroke or a heart attack or something like that, push your pendant and also call 911 so that we don't wait any five minutes for an ambulance. It is very important that even if you call an ambulance, that you push your pendant because it makes the process easier. The EMTs don't necessarily know where to get into the building, how to get into the building. It's locked. Security, there are always two people here. One will be with you. The other one's going to go out and get the ambulance and bring them to the right door to get to the quickest area. In the short term, you push your pendant, security's going to come over. The e-message or phone also, the Waterbird also gets the alert saying that Cindy needs help. They will wait for security to say it's a real response or it's not a real response. And then they will also come over. The nurse will to triage any medical care that they can. So...
Nobody calls first, that they just come?
Nobody calls first, they just come. Correct. You push your button, they'll come. Yes, I didn't think about that for a minute. Yes, Laura?
If you want to switch from a pendant to a watch, how does that happen?
If you want to switch from a pendant to a watch, you can see Angie McKeever in the corner or send a note via your TouchDown... What's the word that I'm looking for? Community, what is it? Ask FVD. We'll direct that to the right spot. We can get you a new pendant if you prefer a watch versus a necklace or a necklace versus a watch. The pendants work inside the building very, very, very well. I don't know if I see a square receptor here, right here. So this square receptor is how you determine where you are in the building. So you'll see one in your apartment. There's one in basically every room. That's how it knows that you're in this room from a GPS perspective. Outside, your pendants work 100 yards from any residential building. So as long as you're on the walking path, it'll pick you up. The only spot is kind of in the corner off of Riverside Green and Birchton, back behind those garages. That gets a little spotty. So if you want to walk, walk inside where the garages are as opposed to on the sidewalk. Yes, Jack?
Can you wear them in the shower?
Ah, this is a great question. I was hoping it wasn't going to come up because I don't have the answer. You definitely can wear them in the shower. They are water-resistant. We actually just talked about this yesterday. We have sent a note to see if you can wear them in the pool. It is my understanding that you can wear them in the pool. It is others that we cannot wear them in the pool. So we will clarify... So we will clarify that for you if you can wear them in the pool or not. Yes?
I have worn mine in the pool for the last year. Now, I don't know that it works, so...
Lois says she's worn it in the pool for the last several years. She doesn't know if it's work. Well, I think you should try it right now and see who shows up. So sometimes it's about five, maybe six, seven minutes before a security guard, because if they're out doing rounds, they have to come in and do what they do. So I just want to make sure that everyone is understanding of that. Yes?
But if it didn't work, they get that smart notice that she didn't tell you?
Correct, so that's, yes, you're right. So if her pendant didn't work, Lois's didn't work and it wasn't inactive, it would pop up on the security report that says that her pendant was not active. Great question. Thank you very much for that. Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Schwinniger?
I wonder if it's timeline for Spectrum?
Oh, Craig's not in the room, but he answered me with this this morning. What is the timeline for Spectrum? I literally signed the contract this morning. It had three rounds of revisions by Orey's. So now the clock is ticking four to six months, depending on how quickly they get in, correct, Tom?
Absolutely.
And Tom's been leading the charge, doing a really, really nice job. I feel like everyone should give Tom a round of applause because feeling inspector is not easy. Thank you, Tom. So four to six months is our timeline on that. Any other questions? Comments? Complaints? All right, thanks so much. Have a great day.